Meeting with budget leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good one, Trustee Thering. Let's see. Our clerk will be a little late this evening, so in the meantime, someone be willing to either nominate or serve as temporary clerk.
I nominate Treasurer Rice, support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Any other nominations? You're willing?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any discussion? All in favor of Treasurer Rice serving as temporary clerk until our clerk arrives, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you for serving.
Not a problem.
That brings... Thank you. I tend to forget that when we have to do this. Would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Sure. Trustee Thering.
Here.
Clerk Cody is going to be late, excused. Supervisor Moki.
Here.
All right. Treasurer Rice, here. Trustee Bills is excused. Trustee Smith.
Here.
And trustee Brown.
Here.
All right.
We have an agenda in front of us. Any motions?
Motion to approve the agenda, support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved unanimously. That brings us to Presentations, which is our introduction to the 2025 Recommended Budget, which we've had in our possession for a little while now. Mr. Steeldryer.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll have a brief presentation on the FY 2025 Manager's Recommended Budget. We do also then have a public hearing following that, and then later in your agenda, Item 11E, there's also an opportunity to discuss the budget, and if you're so inclined, we could adopt it tonight. There are eight budgets that need, or eight funds that need budget approval eventually. They are the General Fund, the FIRE Fund, Special Assessment Fund, both the East and the West DDA Funds, the 2% Grant Fund, and then the Sewer and the Water Fund. And I'll just go through each of the funds and give you some highlights of each of the funds. The operating millage for the General Fund, we'll start with the General Fund, remains at one mill this year. The total appropriation is $3.4 million and some change. On the revenue side, we're anticipating a little over $1.3 million in state shared revenue. That's projected to be flat compared to what we expect to receive by the year end of 2024, and is comparable to the actual monies we received in FY 2023. Interest income continues to go up, both in actual and budgets. You'll see this in all the funds that accrue interest income to them. In the General Fund, we're budgeting $325,000. This compares to $265,000 of actual in 2023, and is similar to what we anticipate for FY 2024. There are no changes recommended in staffing levels for FY 2025. Our benefits are, continue to increase the employee healthcare, dental and vision benefit expenses are projected to increase 9%, 5%, and 5%, respectively. We are going to have a little bit of an increase in the employee contribution to the healthcare benefit program, and that will be 12% of the premium per the labor contracts. We have funds budgeted for the annual cleanup day, which is continuing to prove very successful. I think it's continuing to grow in terms of number of people coming through the line and the amount of materials that we're collecting. The Election Department funding for FY 25 is going to be down considerably from FY 24 because we'll have fewer elections and we don't have the large general election in 2025. We do have funds budgeted, $900,000, give or take, for sidewalk projects. These include $375,000 that we have previously committed to the Mission Creek Pathway, runs from Pickard up to Hannah's Park Park or Mission Creek Park. $300,000 for new sidewalks on Pickard, a little bit of luck, Lincoln to Ashland. We have the engineering mostly done. We're just trying to get some easements yet there. And then $255,000 budgeted for sections along Bluegrass Road. We're budgeting $375,000, $376,000 as a contribution to the Road Commission for gravel road improvements, the annual refurbishing and ditch maintenance that we do, brine application, and in partnership with the Isabella Township and the Road Commission refurbishing readying road within the township limits. The General Fund projected 2025 year-end balance, year-end fund balance is budgeted is projected to be $6.9 million. So that's a high-level overview of the General Fund. I will point out that in the agenda packet and emailed directly to you is all the budget detail, line item. And if you print it out in color, the sections in blue are notes that add a little insight into the into the budget. The FIRE Fund, the mills, FIRE millage remains at 2.25 mills. We're continuing to accumulate fund balance in anticipation of eventually purchasing another fire truck as part of the contract with the city of Mount Pleasant that provides the fire service to us. I will note that for FY 25, we're increasing the amount that we pay to them over the 24 amount by 3%. We are still in this period of continuing the contract on a year-to-year basis as the city works through some of their budgeting and work, and they are in contract negotiations with both their regular fire bargaining unit and the paid-on-call firefighters. We do hope to have a re, a new contract, if you will, sometime in FY 2025, which would then set the stage on a contractual basis for the annual amounts over the next few years. The fund balance in the FIRE Fund is projected at just a shade under $1.5 million. And again, accumulating fund balance for both the, what'll be an $863,000 contractual obligation and then the fire truck savings. The Special Assessment Fund, over the last couple of years, we've had a bit of activity in the special assessment, road paving, special assessment arena. We're projecting a fund balance at year-end of $345,000, which we need as other special assessments come online so that we have funding available to pay for the work upfront, and then we're repaid through the special assessment process. The EDA Fund, total appropriations of $2.1 million. They will be contributing approximately $88,000 to the FIRE Fund for their share of the fire service delivery. We have, again, budgeted $40,000 to continue the grant program that we've had in place the last couple of years. We have funds budgeted for new set of seasonal gateway banners out on 127 in Pickard, the overchange, both the East and the West sides of the interchange. We also have budgeted $500,000 for a contribution to the Water Fund for, to help with the construction of the water system loop from M20 to South Somerton to East Broadway, and that is an item that you all approved a couple of meetings ago. We continue to have money budgeted for potential land assembly if the opportunity presents itself, $400,000 there. And we also have funding of $20,000 that's been carried over from 2024 for installation of a new gateway entrance signage. That would be done in partnership with Consumers NBC and Mid-Michigan College, and that gateway sign would be at the southwest corner of East Pickard and Somerton Road as you enter the township. There's also funding available for the reconstruction of the underground irrigation system for the curb lawn areas and the planters along the corridor. We lost those when Pickard was reconstructed a year or so ago. The net revenue expense of these DDA is budgeted to use approximately $1.5 million of fund balance, and we're projecting a year-end fund balance of just under $1 million at $929,000. The EDA budget and the West DDA budget were both considered by the EDA at their October 15 meeting last week. They approved them along with a recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve as well. The West DDA Fund, total appropriation $427,000. They will be helping with funding the creation of the seasonal gateway banners that I mentioned a minute ago. They also have funds budgeted for a grant program on, for this side of town. We have some, we have $50,000 budgeted to begin to create plans, to develop plans for stormwater drainage, sidewalks, again, on East Remus Road. And then also $50,000 for planning purposes to plan for streetlights and additional streetscape in the West DDA District. The projected year-end fund balance in the West DDA Fund is $1,600,000 and some change. On the sewer side, total appropriation of $5.2 million and some change. We are recommending some usage rate increases as we've done over the last several years on the sewer side, 5.1% increase. And these are, I'll discuss these a bit more when we get to the fee, recommended fee schedule of the budget. Capital maintenance projects, our annual maintenance of our manholes and wet well apparatus, floor lining, system repairs, $110,000 for lift station maintenance and pump repairs. New capital projects include $275,000 for some work and upgrades on pump station number two, $675,000 for upgrades, more substantial upgrades and replacement of pump station number five, and hopefully we'll be able to get to some work on pump station 10. We have $168,000 budgeted for upgrades and replacement. There's also $600,000 budgeted to update the fine screening components at the treatment plant. This is a carry forward from 2024. The projected year-end net assets in the sewer fund are $14.6 million and some change. On the sewer side, total appropriations is 8.8, almost 8.9 million dollars. This is a large budget, primarily as a result of the drinking water grant fund that we received a couple of years ago, and we'll be doing that work, the majority of that work, in FY 25. Water rates, we're recommending increase at 4.8%. Continue with capital maintenance, well number 11, some work done to that. But most of our time will be spent on new capital projects, which is basically managing the spend of that $10.9 million grant. We're looking at the new, new well number 12, new transmission line from the well to the treatment plant at Isabella and Mission Road, upgrades and expansion of the water treatment plant, and lead service line and hydrant head replacements. Those are the four divisions that we're starting to refer to, these components of this project. We're anticipating year-end net assets of $9,840,000. So the next part of the, of my comments will bring your attention, and there's some information up on the screen. It's also in your budget book. The fees are in the other information of your budget book. We are not recommending any building permit fee changes for 2025, although we are recommending that we add a new fee to cover special use application review processes. And that would be applied to special uses, accessory dwellings, bed and breakfast operations, foster family care homes, and short-term rental housing. Those are all special uses, and so what we are talking about there are fees for those review and approval activities did not exist in 2024. So we're recommending adding those in 2025. In the water and sewer area, we are adding a new item to recommend to to receive an escrow deposit at the front end when we're being requested to provide sewer capacity letters. We receive those with some frequency. They involve a lot of work with the engineering firm that we contract with, our own in-house people. And we get a lot of requests for these that are, when folks are just sort of playing around, I'll say, and casually looking at projects. And we're trying to limit some of that. We're primarily interested in folks that are more serious with their proposals. And as an escrow deposit, we would use, draw down from that escrow amount, pay for what we expended, and then return the rest to the firm making the deposit. The water and sewer fees, those recommendations are coming out of the cost of service study. They're going up by inflationary amounts. In some cases, if the fee is particularly labor-intensive, it might be going up closer to 5% because that is how much our labor expenses, just on the salary side of things, are going up in 2025. There is, in your other information book, there's a complete listing of all the staffing in the township, the full-time equivalent, their salary, the benefits, and the total compensation. In total, and these are, those are broken down by department. In total, we are looking at, on an FTE equivalent basis, 27.9 FTEs for total compensation, which includes salaries, wages, and all the benefits, whether it's social security, or healthcare, or Medicare, dental, all those kinds of benefits. Also, in your packet are long-term projections for the General Fund, the FIRE Fund, the East and West DDA Funds. On the General Fund, we are, from a 10-year perspective, we're drawing down fund balance based on current service levels. And by 2034, we could anticipate a fund balance that's less than 100% of annual operating expenses compared to what we've been seeing in the range of 200% or so. You'll see the FIRE Fund, long-term fund balance continuing to increase for the reasons that I've previously stated. The East and West long-term forecasts. We present these just to give us an idea of what we can expect. There are imperatives to spend the money that we collect in these funds. The state keeps an eye on these funds. They, the funds are primarily supported with tax increment financing, which are tax increments that we're capturing from other taxing units. And so we all want to make sure we're spending that money. But looking that far out, it's a little hard for us to judge what we're going to be doing and where. But as previously mentioned, particularly, for instance, on the West DDA side, if we start putting in some significant, meaningful beautification in that area, streetlights and whatnot, we'll be spending these funds. There is a graph of taxable value for the last 10 years or so. We're continuing to see increases in taxable value. The inflationary limit on the increase in taxable value on a per-property basis confined to residential property is 5%. You'll note that in the aggregate, we're looking at a little, around 3.8% increase that takes into account additions, deletions to the tax base, personal property, commercial, industrial. And the 5% max is only applicable to the residential property classification. You'll see our state shared revenue trend in the budget book and up on the screen. Been relatively flat the last couple of years after spiking considerably in 2021 as some of the state budget. and twenty-one, as some of the state budget issues were beginning to get worked out, and they were reinstating state shared revenue that had been cut from the local units for a decade or more. There's a historical graph of the general fund fund balance, both in nominal dollars, which are the bars on the graph, and then reflected as a percent of fund balance is the line. We have added the working capital historical information to the budget document this year for both the water and the sewer. Working capital is important to us. That kind of is the funds that we have available to spend on any given day, maybe similar in concept to a fund balance in the general fund, although they are different due to accounting constraints, rules and regulations, probably a better term. There's a copy of the public hearing notice that was in the Morning Sun a couple Sundays ago, and then a copy of the appropriation resolution in your agenda packet. In this book, it's labeled draft, but it is ready to go if the board was so inclined. Also, in your packet online, or that was sent you electronically, and on the website is a capital plan, so five-year capital plan that covers Township Hall, water and sewer, and then our parks as well. So that concludes my presentation for the evening. Leave it up to the supervisor, how he wants to go from there. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
If we circle back at the end of the meeting, the agenda.
Perfect.
Commissioner Engler, would you like the opportunity to speak?
I'm through three pages here when we talk, so to speak. Just real quick, I mentioned earlier that tomorrow they're going to be a meeting. We're going to start the first part of doing the remodel on the administration building. So that is open to the public. It's at the EOC out on Preston, so over there by the Health Department. So if anybody wants to come, it's not going to be on Zoom because they don't have Zoom capabilities like this nice facility here. The only other thing I want to mention before I take questions is that the city gave us a ninety-day notice on a contract for the recycling. We thought that was the termination of the contract. Well, apparently that that contract's been in effect since it was started, and there's some, we need to work out some issues on there. It's not as simple as we're not going to bring your recycling stuff. So there's some liability issues, some depreciation issues. So both sides are going to be meeting. It's not a contentious one, but we just need to get it right going forward. You know, there'll be some issues as far as ownership, liabilities. We'll have to borrow some money and stuff. So just getting started with that. So it'll be a process. Probably have to get some lawyers involved to get it wrote down right. But it was just an agreement that made no sense. It was done when the facility was first built. So I don't see a problem with it. We just got to get it straightened off. So like I said, it's not just simply just stop and bring material here. It's a little more involved than that. So with that, I will take any questions. I know you got a budget meeting tonight. If not, I will not say anymore. So thank you. Thank you for all the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
All right, that finishes up our presentations. We'll go to public hearings. And do we need a motion to actually open that? So would someone be willing to motion to open up a public hearing for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five?
Make the motion to open up the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget recommendation?
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Cody. Any discussion? All in favor of opening up a public hearing on our two thousand and twenty-five budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And with that, at seven thirty, we will open a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year budget recommendations?
There's nobody online.
Must be nothing contentious in this room. We would have people here to be upset. Let the record show that no one was connected remotely, nor did anybody come up in person. So we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty PM. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on the agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at seven thirty-one PM.
There's still nobody online.
Thank you. And again, let the record show nobody online and nobody coming forward in person. So we'll close public comment at seven thirty-one PM. That moves us to item nine on our agenda, current list of boards and commissions. We do have two applications. There is some, from what I anticipate, there's been some outreach to try to confirm with current city members whether they'll reapply. So there's still some jockeying going on there. So I would recommend we kind of wait at this point because the appointments generally are going to be for the end-of-the-year stuff. So just note, planning commission, we have a seat, then we have one seat on the ZBA, and then we have board review and a board review alternate. So moving on, October monthly report, it was in front of you and was emailed to you today.
Yep.
If you have any comments on that, questions? I did have a chance to kind of glance through it briefly, but we're good? You have something?
No, I just wanted to, again, thank Manager Stuldrider for putting this together. It's very helpful to kind of look it over, kind of see what's going on, and also see what's coming up in the future. Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I second that, trustee Smith.
Okay, moving on then to item nine C, planning commission, EDA and ZBA updates by community and economic development director, Mr. Nanny.
Thank you. I actually have four items to talk about tonight. We'll start with the meetings. The first item is easy, where the zoning board appeals did not meet, no activity there, no applications. We did have a meeting of our economic development authority board on the fifteenth of October. You've already heard that they did adopt the East and West EDA budgets for two thousand and twenty-five and recommended them to you for your final action. In addition to that, they adopted their meeting schedule for twenty-five, and they considered and took action on a request from the owners of Mr. Carwash. This is the Carwash on East Pickard Road. They made a request to remove some of the trees that are along the front of the property. There were some trees that were planted in the road, in the edge of the road right of way, that have grown up to the point where they were blocking the sign. They requested, there are four trees there. They requested to remove all four. The staff went out, took a look at the site, and took a look at the angles from various directions, and found that two of the trees definitely were blocking the sign. They actually were not terribly tall trees, but they were perfect in their perspective to stand right in front of the sign as for motorists traveling either east or west on M twenty. So it was a staff recommendation to take down two of the four trees, or to authorize that the two of the four trees be taken down. In addition to that, there was probably the largest of the four trees, although it didn't block the sign. It's actually located directly in front of the long axis of the sign. There were a couple of branches that were starting to grow in that direction, extending nearer to the sign. So in addition to recommending those two trees be authorized to be removed, we went ahead and asked our landscape contractor to schedule to do some trimming on that third tree that's nearest the sign, just to make sure those branches don't continue to grow in that direction. The EDA board did consider it. They did take the staff's recommendation and did authorize the removal of two trees. And Mr. Carwash folks are working on that process right now. We don't have a date for when they come down, but expect it this fall. The planning commission also met on the fifteenth. They had three items on their agenda, also driven the two thousand and twenty-five scheduled meetings. And they had a public hearing item on their agenda that you will be seeing eventually. This was a rezoning proposal for, to rezone the lot at nine forty-three South Isabella Road, which is currently on the edge of some industrial zoning, in I-one zoning. This lot is across the street from the Delfield Industries Plant, and just north of River Road on the east side of Isabella. The land to the south of it is also an industrial. The land to the north of it is also an R-one rural residential. And this lot, actually in our master plan, is designated for future, what's called rural buffer, which in zoning equivalent would be the R-one rural residential district. The planning commission did hold a hearing. I heard comments from some of the neighbors around, and ultimately did make the decision to recommend that rezoning for adoption, for approval. It is right now in the hands of the county planning commission. They have thirty days to consider any zoning actions we take, zoning ordinance or zoning map actions. And we'll be coming to you later on, probably later meeting in November. The third item on their agenda was reviewing some master plan materials. We had some master plan language related to industrial, future industrial development in the community, and asking for some preliminary comments and direction on that, which they provided. So with that, that brings me to the end of the meeting items. Before I get into my fourth item, that I would ask for just a bit additional time. Are there any questions on the meeting
Thank you.
Here none. The fourth item on my agenda, to have a conversation about, is I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to share with you a few thoughts in response to the recent article posted by the Michigan Capital Confidential Publication that focused on the urban family property that's located just to the south of East Southern Lincoln Road, the forty-acre site, vacant lot on the east side of South Lincoln Road. This article was labeled as a commentary. It's not a news article. And the commentary, the contents of that commentary reminded me of a game. And this is a great icebreaker game for groups when you're trying to get to know people better. This is Two Truths and a Lie. And if you're familiar, if you're not familiar with it, it's essentially a game where you have a group that sits down together, and each person takes turns sharing three statements about themselves. Two of those statements are true. They're facts about that person. And the third statement is intended to be a believable lie. And so out of that thought, the goal of the other players in this game is to try to figure out which of those three statements is the lie. In this case, I'd like to share and kind of pull out of the article that I read that inspired this, two facts really to talk a little bit further about and give some perspective on. The first fact is that the urban family did about a year and a half ago, apply for land division application. This forty-acre lot, if you're familiar with it down the street, about thirty acres of it is farmed. And that, most of that area that's farmed has been marketed for quite some time for business or office development. It's actually, most of that land is zoned, either in a commercial district or in an office service district. The northeast corner of this lot is about ten acres of woodland, and the proposal was to split off that woodland into a separate parcel. This ten-acre parcel is right at the end of Sandstone Drive. It's directly south of Cornerstone Estates subdivision, right at the end of Sandstone Drive. So unfortunately, the application, the individual application, had to be denied by our zoning administrator. What he found was that the proposed lot did not comply with Section Seven of our zoning ordinance. This section has language in it that requires each new lot created to have direct frontage, a direct access and frontage on a public road or an approved and constructed private road. In this case, what is down there at the end of, south end of Cornerstone Estates, is a short section of Road Right Of Way. It's labeled Broadway Street, but it's not developed. It's actually his future right of way. And the zoning administrator found that that was not a public road, as Section Seven defines it. We met after the denial with the family members, and we talked about what options there would be. And there were several options. One option, because this property was intended for one of the family members to be able to buy and build a house on this ten acres. One of the options was actually for them to go ahead and apply for a building permit and build the house on the current forty-acre property. Because the forty-acre site has road frontage on South Lincoln Road. So they could build the house where they wanted to build it, but without the land division. And we could have issued a permit for that almost immediately once we had plans. The other option was to, this was an item that is noted in the article, was they could create the road frontage that's required. And it's a very short amount of road frontage, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet, that they could create that by extending Sandstone Drive south into that ten-acre parcel for a short distance, and then should they have a cul-de-sac or other turnaround that the road commission would allow for, to establish that required road frontage. And then the lot could be divided, and the house could be built. The third option, and this is the one they ultimately chose, would be to appeal the zoning administrator's decision to the zoning board appeals. Anybody that is agreed by a decision related to zoning can appeal to the zoning board appeals. And that's ultimately what they did. Zoning board appeals did hold a hearing, and after extensive deliberation, it's not an easy decision, but after extensive deliberation, they did decide to approve the land division application. This was an appeal of the administrator's action. So they first found that the administrator made an error in interpreting the ordinance related to what is a public road. And essentially, the board appeal said is that right of way that didn't have a road in it was a public road, and so this land division should have been approved. So they then, when they make that decision, they then have the authority of the zoning administrator, and they then took the second action to actually approve the land division application. The lot was created, and there were no further impediments to pursuing a building permit for the home. Unfortunately, the township cannot issue a building permit without plans and without an application, and the application never applied. There was no further activity related to that site, and so the land remains vacant today. The article indicates that there were impediments by the township to prevent that home from being built, and that's simply not the case. They simply chose not to apply after the zoning board appeals approval of the land division. So that's the first item, the first fact. The second one, I'll just take a moment to talk about, is a proposal that was submitted, I'm sorry, submitted is really not the wrong word, is proposal that was brought to township staff for potential private school development on a portion of that remaining thirty acres. The article suggested it was all forty. It was not. It was actually, in fact, in the discussions, it wasn't even going to be all thirty of the remaining land. But the proposal was to build a private school. We had an introductory meeting with the pastor Ives, who was the head of the development team for this private Christian school. No plans. This was not a pre-application meeting. There was nothing formal. It was a meeting to kind of, for them, to get answers to questions about what are the challenges? What's the process? What are the options for this site? And the main item that was brought up was that the property would need to be rezoned. As I said earlier, zone commercial and office. Schools are not allowable use in those districts, but they are in the residential districts. And so they would need to pursue rezoning to residential. The, as part of that, we also talked about some of the things to keep in consideration as they're looking at this site for future development of the school. The first thing we talked about was that they should talk to the road commission very early on, because the school was not going to have bus service, as they proposed anyway. There would be a large influx of traffic, morning and evening, the pickup and drop-off periods. And so the road commission may require some improvements to South Lincoln, including turney lanes, for example, to allow that functionality to be maintained on the road even during those peak periods. road even during those peak periods. Also discussed during this period was the township and the city of Pleasant's interest in extending Broadway Road from Bradley Street in the city to the west to South Lincoln Road, which would include crossing kind of the northern part of this, this urban family parcel. There is, there's no Rightofway there, in the township there, as in the city side, as I understand it. But there was interest in the city master plan, it talks about that extension, and the township master plan talks generally about having connectivity in our road network. So we simply talked to them about the interest the township would have in having a conversation about how we might accomplish that in a way that would coordinate with any development project that might, that might take place. And of course, we also talked to them about the fact that connecting those roads would help to connect their school to those families with children that are in Cornerstone Estates and in the city neighborhoods to the east. So it was not, the article suggests that it was a demand, or that it was some kind of requirement before the land can be sold or developed, there was no conversation of that sort. It was simply to let them know of the long-term interest and policy preference in our master plans to have that road connectivity be developed. And if we can coordinate that, we'd like to talk about how we might do that. The fact is that this was a very preliminary meeting, and our goal was to, and our invitation that we made to Pastor Ives was to have a follow-up meeting specifically to talk about a rezoning application, and help them to create the best possible application for that rezoning. Res zoning residential would be against the current master plan, adopted in 2018, but there is, there is language in our zoning ordinance in the amendment section that talks about kind of criteria to consider when looking at rezoning that is not consistent with our master plan. What are the changing, changed conditions, for example, that might make appropriate a different zoning? In this case, that property had been marketed for a long time for office and commercial development without any activity. And between the city and the township, there's recognition that our communities are significantly overzoned for commercial development, and so the rezoning might be completely appropriate there. So we invited them to have a follow-up meeting, and as we do for anybody that's seeking to apply for something like this in the township, we helped them build the best possible application, just by answering questions and giving some counsel on things to consider. In this case, there was no follow-up. Frankly, just to conclude, I have to tell you, I was disappointed that there was no further follow-up from the development team. As I told Pastor Ives at the time, I thought this was a great idea. The school would be a resource for the community, and frankly, it would be a benefit in that area, that neighborhood. We had conversations both with Pastor Ives at that time, and actually with the Urban Families at another time, about potentially rezoning that land, having them seek a rezoning application and look at that maybe as an all-residential site, because there of course is a need for additional housing, and it's a nice site to connect and to build in Cornerstone Estates and the other neighborhoods around. So, as I said, I was disappointed the application didn't, or the proposal didn't go forward to an application. I still think it's a good idea, and that's, I think that's where I would leave at this point. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
This is the same school, I think, that's now being proposed on Broomfield and Crawford, correct?
That's, I understand that's the case, yes.
And in that case, they had to rezone as well, which is what the city just was going through with that corner, was to rezone to allow that.
There was also a part in there about water and sewer, and I don't remember the exact how they worded it, but is it beyond just normal water and sewer service to any new site, or what were they, what were they talking about as far as that?
So with the land division application, this was separate from any action by the zoning administrator. The, there are a number of water and sewer lines running through, there's water that's at the end of Sandstone Drive. There is a force main and a gravity feed sewer that parallel one another, that essentially, if you take Sandstone Drive and go straight south across this plan, those run through that ten-acre site. As I mentioned earlier, there's, there is no Broadway, Road Rightofway there, that would extend up to Lincoln. And what we suggested, that if they created the ten-acre lot as they did, and that land was then sold off to somebody else, as was intended, that it would make it much harder to potentially extend that water line from Sandstone into this thirty-acre site. It might make it harder to access the sewer lines that would serve any development on the remaining thirty acres. And so there was no main demand, wasn't any requirement, what we basically said was that, excuse me, that the Urban Family should consider taking proactive steps to ensure that they have that access, typically be through setting easements on that ten-acre lot that allow for that, those extensions in the future.
So it was more of an easement issue rather than having to upgrade any lines or anything like that?
Right, and it was also to serve them. These lines would go nowhere else other than those thirty acres that the Urban Family owns. It was not a public benefit, it was not to serve other lots elsewhere. Those are all served by existing facilities. It was simply to ensure that they could have, maximize the development potential on those thirty acres that remained.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I think it's outstanding that you made this very clear publicly.
You're welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm appreciative as well.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item, I think we're all like clearing our throats tonight. That's why I wasn't here two weeks ago, I still have this. Brings us to item ninety on the agenda, Board Member Reports, Trustee Theryn.
I'm good, thank you.
Clerk Cody, don't say you don't have something.
I do have something.
Good.
Early voting starts Saturday at Powers Hall on Washington Street, open eight to four. So you can go in-person early vote.
Do you want to address parking real quick, too?
Lot six.
Lot six, and not being, ticketing is not being enforced during those hours.
Correct, correct.
For those that want to go vote, you don't have to worry about your car being towed.
Correct.
Trustee Brown?
All set.
Trustee Smith?
At the county meeting, they had seventeen items that they discussed, and I'm only going to discuss one of them. They had a discussion regarding the opioid settlement funds, on how they are going to get so much each year, and how they best leverage those funds to make it more of a long-term solution, rather than just some short-term cash infusions to some various entities or services. So they're developing some policies and going through some steps to develop more of a long-term solution for that, which I thought was really good. I don't know if you had a chance to read, like, Bridge Magazine and stuff like that, they've been talking about all these counties that are in municipalities are sitting on all these opioid funds, and that not doing anything with them. So it's kind of becoming a hot button issue. There's even one municipality in the Detroit area where they were actually using that to, to supply some budget monies for their fire department, saying they expended this for past opioid fire and EMS runs, so we're going to use that to help recover those lost monies from the past. So just little things like that, that is going on, they're walking a fine line, I think, on that, oh, but, so the county's taking a very proactive approach on trying to get that taken and done, and done the right way.
That southern county sounds creative.
It wasn't a county, it was actually, it was a fairly large, and I can't remember the name, municipality down there. I mean, it was like eight hundred thousand dollars they were taking, and was just going to use it for their fire fund, and saying, well, we can do this because we spent this much, more than this much in the past how many years on all these drug runs. So it's kind of like, I just, I don't know, it's the, a lot of the very loose, loose use of funds on that in some areas. So that's all I have.
Treasurer Rice?
So, I guess the only thing I have is we are getting taxes going, so that when the new treasurer steps in, they're going to be done, so. Yay, expecting those in the mail.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I don't have anything at this point, so let's move on to consent agenda. Happy to entertain any motions, and I believe Trustee Theryn had warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Motion by Rice, support by Smith. Your thumbs up, was everything looked good?
Yeah, I am satisfied.
Any other comments? A motion to approve consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to new business. Item A, this is introduction and first reading for zoning ordinance amendment regarding how the approval workflow works for site plans. Mr. Stuldry, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. So the administration is asking the board to consider introducing and conducting a first reading for what's being referred to as proposed text amendment twenty-four dash two, which would amend Sections fourteen point two of the zoning code, which is the site plan review section, and Section twelve point five, which is the non-conforming site section of the zoning code, to amend these sections to allow for administrative approval of a final site plan under certain circumstances, and for the zoning administrator to apply the non-conforming site provisions to minor site plans. And these changes have been reviewed by the planning commission, they recommend that the board of trustees adopt them. There's a report that begins on page twenty-nine of your agenda packet, and these are items that, that support some prior board of trustee action. Back in July of 2023, the board adopted a resolution of intent to participate in the redevelopment-ready communities certification program. It's run by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC. And the resolution also spoke to incorporating these redevelopment-ready community best practices into the township development-related ordinances and codes and planning documents. And lastly, it, the intent was to pursue a redevelopment-ready community certification from the MEDC. One, so that was back in 2023. Fast forward to this year, the staff from the redevelopment-ready community area of the state was in reviewing our codes, processes, policies, as we begin to try to obtain these A lot of the best practices relate to zoning and development review processes, the idea is to try to speed up the time between applications by developers, builders, what have you, and final approval of the, at the local level. They did a baseline review of our current ordinances and policies earlier this year, and they did point out that many, most, not all, but most of our current processes, processes already foot, if you will, with the best practices. And this is a result of a couple of things. One, the adoption of the zoning code in 2020, when that process was undertaken, we did incorporate into those, into that amendment, or the rewrite, many of these best practices that the MEDC would like these local units to have. One of the items that they did talk about following their baseline review was to try to speed up, see how we could speed up some of these approval processes. So the items in front of you are designed to do that, to take what, for instance, one of the items is administrative approval of final site plans if they comport with all the requirements in the zoning code. The State Enabling Act does not allow for nonapproval if all the requirements are met. It does allow for administrative approval. Our current zoning code has final site plan approval in all cases going to the planning commission. So one of the recommendations, one of two primary items in this amendment, would allow for administrative approval of final site plans if all the conditions are met. The other item is along the same vein, the zoning administrator currently has authority to apply non, has approval, has authority in the code to approve minor site plans currently. What they don't have authority to do is approve non-conforming provisions within minor site plans, those have to go to the planning commission. So the other material item in this recommended text amendment is to allow the zoning administrator to apply the provisions of the non-conforming use, which is Section twelve point five of your zoning code, to the minor site plans. If they comport, then we would allow for administrative approval of these site plans that have non-conform, non-conforming site provisions in them. Both changes would reduce the development approval process timeline in most cases. As I mentioned earlier, the planning commission reviewed this item at their August twentieth meeting, they held a public hearing at their September seventeenth meeting, there were no comments from the public, and the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. So that's the background on it. We're asking the board to conduct a first reading and introduction tonight, and then if we move forward, there'd be a final reading and adoption at the next board of trustee meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
One, and I think you touched on, this would be page three of the amendments, or page thirty-four of the packet, Section L two A, and I think, or two, yes, A. And I think this is kind of important that the public knows, is that the zoning administrator shall not have the authority to approve a final site plan with conditions, or to deny a final site plan approval. So I think that to make that clear, that the zoning administrator cannot deny a final site plan approval, that it's not just giving the zoning administrator all this authority and stuff like that, that is just for approvals, or approvals with smaller conditions and stuff like that, but just want to make sure the public is aware that the planning commission would still have that final authority, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. Final site plan.
Cannot be denied by the zoning administrator. If there is a denial, it would be by the planning commission itself, so it gives that individual, that business, the opportunity to come up in front of a full board. I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that.
So I think in practice, what I'm hearing, if the zoning administrator had an issue with something that had gone through the preliminary site plan, if there was issues where they might feel that they wouldn't approve it, then they would take it probably at that point to the, rather than denying, of course, because they don't have the authority, then they would take it to the planning commission. Is that accurate application of?
Yeah, that's the way of saying it, yeah.
And I think it's important to note, too, that there are exceptions, but primarily, site plans will still go through to the planning commission, it's just they may skip that last step if they're close enough, is essentially how it works. they're close enough, is essentially how it works.
Imagine being a developer, and the day after we have a meeting, all their ducks are in a row and they're ready to go. They do not have to wait another month.
Right.
From the final site plan.
Yeah. But what the public ought to hear is the planning commission was involved in that first step.
Yep.
Right.
But, but like Andrew Stuldryer said, if, if they meet all the requirements and everything that's required, we could not deny them anyway. So, rather than making them waiting a month to do what we know we have to do, they can go. It will happen.
Does this also uh, reduce that fee for the second planning commission meeting then? That's a good question.
So, I, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
At, I mean, at this point, obviously, this has not been adopted. We're, we're adopting the fee, uh, fee schedule as part of the budget. We certainly can look at that question. Uh, and uh, and if there is a need to adjust, we can. The problem is, is that we will not know if the final site plan meets all the requirements until it's actually been submitted and reviewed. So, but we'll certainly evaluate that for, for next year.
Yeah, only in the sense that, I mean, there's some internal cost, obviously, that still happens for administrative approval.
Most of the cost is for staff time to review the plans anyway.
Anyways, okay.
So, it's, it, I'm not sure that there would be much of a difference.
Because our planning commissioners do get paid, and it does take public time, too. Okay. Do you have other questions? Anybody else? I have two. So, on, this is page two of the proposed ordinance, page thirty-three in the packet. Um, the flow diagram um, made sense to me with the exception of the very optional bottom box. And probably because I couldn't find language that reinforced it, and it's probably there, but I just wasn't seeing it. So, can that be described? When would the board of trustees get involved in a approval process for that? It says a development agreement, so I thought that was kind of separate from site plans, is it not?
It is, and Mr. Nanny?
So, there's language in the zoning ordinance that talks about uh, development agreements. They are, I mean, it's essentially a contract between the developer and the township. It would usually, and this would be very rare, first of all, related to a site plan. Uh, but it would usually involve circumstances when there's a need for some kind of public infrastructure to support whatever the project is. And how that would be accomplished and, uh, and who would pay for it could be, could be set up in a development agreement. There are some communities that use them regularly. Uh, as I said, it's not, it, it, it's not very common uh, in the work that we, we do. Because in most cases, where, where the development's happening, the infrastructure's already in place. But if there is a need for some kind of an agreement between the developer and the, and the, and the township, in this case, the township board, uh, to address any public infrastructure or other, other kind of issues that are beyond the scope of, of the plans themselves, uh, it could be handled through a development agreement. So, it's just simply noted there as something that could come up.
I, I kind of figured that was it, but I wanted clarification on it, so. And largely, that's because there would be public funds ultimately put into something, and the board has to approve that, so. Uh, my second question, I think both of them, them are easy. Uh, this is page six of the proposed ordinance, page thirty-seven uh, in the packet. This is replacing the section twelve point five on non-conforming sites. Item C, is that list one through nine in there? Is that essentially the same list we have now?
It is.
Okay. I just, I didn't go look at it, and I thought I could ask. So, you didn't add or remove anything from that list at this point?
We didn't.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion, right? I'll make a motion to introduce and conduct the first reading for the proposed PT XT twenty-four dash O-two amendments to section fourteen point two site plan review and section twelve point five non-conforming sites to allow for administrative approval of the final site plan. Sorry. Under certain, certain circumstances and for the zoning administrator to apply the non-conforming site provisions to minor site plans as recommended by the planning commission.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Rice. We just had discussion, but any other questions or discussion? Uh, so we have a motion to conduct a first reading of what we were just talking about. Any confusion on the motion? All in favor of conducting that first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Do a roll call.
Would you like a roll call?
Yes.
Sure, you can do a roll call of that.
Okay. Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Therry?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. You're always welcome to ask for a roll call. With that, I guess we consider the public reading conducted. No objections moving on?
No.
That brings us to item, excuse me, uh, eleven B on our agenda. This is kind of a carryover from the last meeting. I did happen to watch our la- last meeting live. Wasn't feeling good, but I watched y'all. Um, so I expected to see this, and here it is. Mr. Stuldryer, is there anything you want to introduce on this? I don't think there's any surprises here.
I, I will, just for a moment, just for the, for the record, if you will. The administration represented by me as the township manager is asking the board to consider granting authorization to the manager to amend a previously approved standard department director at-will employment agreement that was originally approved to form in substance for use by the manager's office about a year, uh, well, not that long, a few months ago, actually. Well, maybe it's been a year, Janu- January of twenty-four. That was approved by the board of trustees back in January. What is being requested is to change that. Currently, there's a severance provision if someone is, the department director is terminated without cause. There's currently a provision where they receive three months of severance payment. And the request that's being asked for you to consider is to change that to four months. And again, only when a director is terminated without cause and has worked for the township at least three years. That length of working is not a change. There was some discussion about that at your October uh, ninth meeting just a couple of weeks ago. I had brought it up in conjunction with the negotiations that were going on with my employment agreement for the next year, next year, twenty twenty-five. It was suggested by the board that it might be better to decouple that, and I understand why from the discussion on the manager's employment agreement. And it was agreed that it would be brought back to the board at your next meeting, hence why it's here for you tonight. Uh, the primary rationale in it is to um, because I believe uh, that increasing the severance payment will help continue to, we've, we've done a lot of things over the years geared towards recruiting and retaining good employees, uh, excellent employees. And this is an item that I think can help uh, move that down the road and, and continue the success that we've had at recruiting and retaining excellent employees. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I don't have a question. I'll just make a motion. Is that okay? I'll make a motion to grant authorization to the township manager to amend the previously approved standard department director at-will employment agreement, which was approved to form this substance for the township. Ship's manager, I'm sorry, manager's office by allowing for four months of severance instead of the current three months severance payment, which a department director is terminated without cause and has worked for the township at least three years.
Support. Uh, motion by Cody, support by Brown. Comments, questions? Yes, Clerk Cody?
Again, I think this is fine because it's terminated without cause and I just agree to it. I don't think anybody should be terminated without cause, so. It's my opinion.
I'm in support. Primarily, I think the manager listed the primary reason for it, which is my primary reason for it.
Nope. I'm just, I'm just reading something for a second.
Sure.
So, when we originally did this, it was one month for every year up to three years. Is this saying that you have to wait three years before you get four months?
May I address that?
Sure.
What was originally before you, when I first brought the agreement to you for the very first time? It contained a provision that the severance payment would be equal to one month of pay for each year worked up to a maximum of six months of severance. That is what was originally brought to the board. And after discussion, the board approved the agreement with a change to that section to read a severance payment equal to three months of pay at the employee's incurred rate if the employee worked for at least three years.
So, it's not, if you worked a year, you don't get the month, if you, okay.
The way it's currently worded, until you've completed three years of employment, if you were terminated without cause, you would get no severance.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah.
Anybody else? We have a motion on the floor? You want to do a roll call on this one? I'm asking for a roll call on this one.
You want it? Okay. Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Therry?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
All yeses. Thank you, Clerk Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Stuldryer. Uh, let's see, that brings us to item eleven C, uh, policy governance three, I'm sorry, two point five financial conditions and activities. Mr. Stuldryer, this is your wheelhouse.
Thank you. Uh, this is the quarterly review of the administration's compliance with policy two point five titled financial conditions and activity. At the very highest level, the policy states that with respect to actual and ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in your ends policies. Then it goes on to state that further without limiting the scope of that prior statement, he or she shall not, and there are about tens of policies to those that I'm not going to read and go through tonight. I interpret this policy uh, to indicate that there will be no expenditures made or incurred that will exceed the expenditures budgeted for the current fiscal year unless it is an emergency purchase as outlined in policy two point five point six. The manager shall also not make a single purchase or commitment unless it falls under two point five point six of greater than twenty thousand dollars or inform the uh, uh, board of purchases over ten thousand dollars. The interpretation also includes a statement that all tax payments to other governmental entities are to be paid according to state statute. Payroll, which is paid bi-weekly and accounts payable invoices be processed timely and ready for board approval as soon as they are received, verified, and coded for payment. So, when you look at the entirety of the policy, it speaks to many of these items in my interpretation, which is on page forty-eight of your agenda packet. That's how I'm interpreting the policy. I believe that's a reasonable interpretation. When the budget's approved by the board of trustees under our style of administration governance at Union Township, it's left to the management team to operate within the guidelines established and um, of course, to follow all state and federal statutes. This also, this justification recognizes that the township board is to function as a policymaking body, and the management team is to function as an implementor of that uh, policy as indicated in the approved budget. There's a series of reports, um, or pages of reports. It's a general fund, departmental revenue and expenditure report, special revenue fund and enterprise fund report of the current revenues and expenditures. I will argue that all our expenditures support the global ends policies. There has not been any long-term uh, general fund reserves that have been used in several years. All payroll was paid timely in July, August, and September. All payroll taxes submitted to the relevant state or federal agencies were paid on time per code. There is uh, ample cash flow, which enables timely payment of our payroll and bills, uh, supported by our uh, fund balances or working capital reserves. So, I would suggest that the administration is in compliance with this uh, policy. Be happy to answer any questions.
Just one thing to point out, I find it just interesting that the interest earned so far this year through nine thirty is so close to what we collect in property taxes for the general fund. It's just, it's, it's just amazing how little taxes the township assesses under one mil, and we're able to get interest and everything else like that. And just goes to show what the manager and the team and the board has been doing to uh, keep things financially stable and stuff. But the interest is, you know, two hundred ninety-five thousand, and we collected three forty-nine in, in one mil. It's just, it's just, it's just interesting. You, you don't see that ever. Kudos to you for getting, and your staff for getting uh, interest the higher interest market for the savings and CDs.
I have some comments on the same thing, but I'll save it for budget discussion. Any other questions? So, uh, I, I know there's not a form for this, but does anybody feel we're not in compliance here?
No.
The management is not. Um, just to note, we did make a change this, this last year, right? For those uh, single purchases, um, any language that you have issue with?
No, not at all.
Okay. Moving on then. Uh, this brings us to item eleven D on the agenda. Uh, policy governance four point three. This is more our stuff. Delegation to the township manager and management team. I'm assuming that each of you have read through this. Um, I will read the high-level one just for the public. Uh, this is regarding for policy four point three, delegation to township manager and management team. Policy states the board will instruct the township manager and management team through written policies which prescribe the organizational ends to be received and describe organizational situations and actions to be avoided, allowing the town, t- allowing the township management to use any reasonable church interpretation of these policies. And then there are some sub-items with that. And so, the process the board is looking at now is to evaluate whether or not we are living up to our own policies. So, anybody feel we're not in compliance with this?
No.
No. No.
Anything we can improve upon regarding these issues or these policies?
Nope.
No.
Again, language issues?
Nope.
Something missing, something needs to be removed?
Nope.
Clarified?
I don't think so.
It's good.
Think so too. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, moving on then to our last new business item eleven E. Uh, this is opportunity to discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-five recommended budget uh, that we had the presentation for earlier and then the public hearing. I'm gonna ask our Manager Stuldryer, you gave a nice presentation. Do you have anything else you want to add? At this point?
Only, and, and I've said it, I said it at the last meeting. I do want to emphasize that this is, uh, a continuation of the work that's been started this year in the main. There's no new staffing requests. There's no new major initiatives that are being asked to be funded in the current budget. So, thank you. Be happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Floor is open for anybody.
You're chomping at the mouth.
We'll let you go first.
I don't have a lot, but I have a few. Um, so I'll start with the interest one. That was my first one, in fact. So, interest income is budgeted at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's, uh, could be similar to what we expect by the end of the year in twenty twenty-four, as you alluded to. So my, my question on this was, are we, is this because we're, some of, some of the CDs that we have are longer term and we have locked in rates? Just because I know interest rates are beginning to come down quite a bit. Is that why in twenty-five we're having expectations of similar interest results? My question makes sense?
Yeah, and, and that would be, uh, primarily the reason. You'll note that twenty-five is kind of flat with twenty-four and, um, we have CDs that mature further down the road. We do lock in those rates. We have, uh, CDs that mature earlier and they are subject to the rates of the day, so to speak. But it, we, we've had high rates for, relatively high rates for several years now and, uh, they have begun coming down. I don't know that they'll necessarily come down a lot more. I think the days of zero interest rates are over. At least for the next century. Seem to get those about once every hundred years. I don't know if that answered your question.
It, it does. Uh, yeah, it, it does. Annual cleanup day, um, funding eighteen thousand. Uh, I didn't happen to go look at what it was last year. For some reason, I was thinking it was fifteen last year, but my memory could be wrong. And I'm not asking to confirm that. I just want to make sure, uh, what we experienced this past fall for the annual cleanup day was high volume. And for those that were there, we actually filled up both, um, the waste trucks. And I didn't know if we were trying to budget potentially a third truck.
Well, there's a couple things. The primary one is we are, we are anticipating losing MMI as a staffing solution to that. And so, uh, if that is come to bear, then I think we'll end up paying a little bit more in labor expenses for the cleanup day. And, um, the other item, shred it, uh, that seems to be taking off, starting to get some legs. Two years ago, I think it was two years ago was the first year. This is the second year they're kind of reaching capacity in their truck as well. And so for those reasons, we've budgeted a bit more.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're taking that into account. This is just a note, um, this is the second to last bullet item in the general. Contributions to the ICRC are budgeted at three hundred seventy-six thousand for gravel road improvement, um, et cetera, et cetera. I, I made this comment last year. If you looked at the overall budget, we have sidewalks at a little over nine hundred thousand, I believe it was. Road, roads at substantially less than that. And there's a few reasons for that. Uh, some very large sidewalk projects were being carried over from last year. So they weren't expended in twenty-four, even though they were budgeted in twenty-four. And the other thing that occurs, um, is the road commission doesn't identify all their projects early enough for us to budget them. And so typically what has to happen is we have to amend the budget partially through the year to account for additional road projects that are recommended by the county that we also agree with and are partners in. So I just wanted to explain that. So there's no question there, for the public. The special assessments, this is on the bottom of the, uh, summary page, second summary page. You addressed this earlier that, uh, your imbalance would be somewhere around three hundred forty-five thousand for the special assessment fund. Do we need? I guess I want to ask this board, is it useful to look at what that fund would look like if there was no drawdowns and paybacks so we know that we have what we need there? Because we're in a position with this that we could find ourselves potentially having to borrow money if there were enough special assessment projects. Is that an accurate read that we could be in that position, correct?
I don't. I mean, it, it's a position that's easily avoided. The board just would not approve.
Correct. I understand that.
Right. And you would need an awful big subdivision to require this kind of money.
Yeah, I was thinking if like three or four came in that were good size, if it happened.
Right.
Not anticipating that.
Right.
You're not worried about it at this point? And I guess unless we see assessment, because that should grow this year, because there'll be several assessment districts that are paying into that now.
It, and that's part of the budget is anticipating the pay-in. We do have a it's, it's, uh, Meadowbrook and Stone Ridge. That's a special assessment district that's kind of in the works. It's been through an informal petition process. They've been noticed. They, I believe, are circulating formal petitions. That would not get expended till twenty twenty-five. I think I guess the way that, that these things take so long, I forget which year they're actually approved and made, but we've been actually expending monies for about one special assessment a year lately. Although we're often working on more than one in a given year.
Takes time.
Yeah.
The process. I'm good. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't concern.
There would always be the opportunity to, uh, if we did see ourselves in that situation, you'd, you'd have a couple of, you'd, you'd have several options. One, you could deny it. Two, you could borrow the money from a bank or someplace. You could also borrow the money from the general fund or just appropriate money from the general fund.
Okay, I thought it-
Over to this fund.
I thought I had asked that and you said it would could not get that with the general fund, not, not the loan part, um, but tran-, essentially a transfer, right?
Can't do that with the enterprise funds, but you, there's no reason you can't do that with the, I mean, this, this special assessment fund is some number of years ago was like underwater and that was resolved by funding it.
That's right. Had thoughts, so, okay.
With the general fund.
That, that's helpful. I'm, I'm good. The, uh, I just have, have to lift this one up because this is like something that I find, uh, dear to the heart. Uh, this is under East DDA, uh, two hundred thousand dollars being budgeted for plan to reconstruct the Packard Corporate Airport Road area. And the reason I'm lifting that up is I'm convinced we need more, uh, industrial, light industrial areas, and that's one that the East DDA, we expanded the boundaries, if you remember, to include that. We're not capturing any taxes there, but it's under the authority now. And I know there's a, a lot of hurdles to cross, uh, on that, but I'm, I'm I'm excited for what that can become. And whether or not we get the opportunity to spend that this year, we'll see. Also, just note on East DDA, I, I think our directors mentioned this, but in case we haven't, there's four hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, budgeted in their budget for reconstruction of the underground irrigation system. Uh, just to note, um, I think it's fair to say that the DDA has not made decisions on that yet. I just want to make that clear. But they approved this budget because they wanted that option left open um, as they explore what the costs are going to be and whether or not it's the right avenue to go. And that's why it's in the budget. But no decisions have been made on the East DDA, um, with regards to commitment. And, let's see. You guys are letting me go, right? You clarified that in your presentation. So the, um, this is also being taken from the summary, uh, just a note on fees, uh, water and sewer fees are recommended to increase based on cost of service study recommendations. How, I, I realize we did that cost and service study, it was about four years ago now, right? Maybe five? How accurate do you think that is now? Especially with some of the additions because of that, uh, eleven million dollar grant that we got. We're expanding the water system quite a bit. Are we in a position where that cost of service study is, is becoming out of date because of those changes?
We're still using the, the, the basis of it.
Right.
And we have tried to keep it current, if you will, by increasing the fees as originally recommended a couple of years ago. And we use the, the guidance for those increases have often been inflation and wage increases that are, that we know of as part of the collective bargaining agreement. Having said that, um, it is getting time where it would, it would make sense to do that cost of service study again.
And that's what I was getting at.
Though we, we have money in the budget to do a, a ordinance review. I don't think we have the money in the budget for the cost of service study again. But we can anticipate in the next couple of years having to redo that again, because it should be done every seven to ten years. And we can anticipate, um, now I lost my train of thought. I think that's, it was the ordinance update and the cost of service study in the utility funds.
That, that answers my question. And then I have one comment. This is, uh, personnel cost summary, page one of four. This is where in the elected officials section, it lists the pay for the board. And it lists benefits, and I'm assuming benefits in this case, um, is essentially just FICA and the standard, uh, payroll tax matching by the township, right?
Yes. We, we, from a budget perspective, we refer to those as benefits. They're mandated, if you will.
Right.
But Medicare, Social Security. I think we pay something for workers' comp. And I don't know if I'm missing one.
No, but that's, I figured that's what they were, the mandatory payroll deductions that, um, that the employer also has to contribute to in addition to the employee. So with that, it was back in, I think, about sixteen or so, fifteen, we, we actually cut, uh, this, this previous board, cut health insurance, dental, eye, retirement, all kinds of stuff. So the word benefit bothered me a little bit because I was proud that we were able to cut all that, uh, cost off the elected officials backs, or on the officials backs, essentially. So for a public-facing document, it would be nice if this were, uh, labeled differently than benefits, because I think most people might interpret this as um, something other than mandatory payroll deductions. That was my only comment.
Okay.
I just don't want some, what benefits, what benefits do you guys get? It's like, the answer is none. Other than what's required by law. That was all I had.
I just had a quick question. Brian did a great job summing everything up. With the new board coming on next year, is there money in the trustees line to have a refresher for policy governance?
Yes, there's training monies
Okay.
in the trustees department, the clerk
Okay.
and the treasurer and the supervisor. And I'm already starting to compile some dates and events that, uh, in fact, the only one I, I guess I know two, but at a minimum, we have a new treasurer and one new trustee. And so I'm hoping they avail themselves of those opportunities that will be provided to them.
Yeah, okay.
And we have money budgeted for this.
Okay, thank you. Everything else, it just seemed like this course of the whole year, it's like, okay, this money's getting moved to the next year. This, so all these big ticket items, I think we've been aware of for a number of months now as projects got held up and couldn't finish and stuff, so there was really uh, no surprises, uh, to me, and great job.
Thank you. And I think the manager said too, no major new initiatives of any sort. It really is a continuation of what we've been doing.
I'll make a motion when you're ready.
Did you have something?
Oh, I, we both stepped in at the same time.
Clerk Cody?
Clerk Cody, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget for the various funds as shown in the attached budget document at the department level, subject to the township's policies regarding the expenditure of funds, budget management, budget reporting, and other financial-related policies and technical typographical corrections, if any.
Support.
Excuse me. Motion by Cody.
Can, can I step in just briefly?
Support by Rice?
Um, we should also include that, that there's two, be it further resolved statements.
Okay.
Include those, please.
That the attached fee schedule is hereby established for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and that the following millage, subject to the reduction of the Headley Millage Reduction Correction is to be levied for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Still support.
Okay. So we have an amended motion by Cody, amended support by Rice. Further discussion? Just a note for the public, um, because we do have an election coming up fairly soon. And as the manager mentioned, there will be at least a couple faces that are new, um, if not more. So one of the things that boards in the past have found is difficult is coming in and the first order of business is to jump into a budget you have no idea anything about. Um, and so this board is trying to be proactive, I think, correct me if I'm not speaking for you. Is trying to be proactive and get this, uh, obligation, uh, by law done and taken care of, knowing that the next board can change the budget at any time.
Yep, that's true.
So with that, any other comments?
It may be helpful when the new board is set up to do a budget review. It may be helpful when the new board is set up to do a budget review, you know, very similar to what you did, probably not as lengthy, but I just, I remember being the trustee first starting out and looking over the budget and.
Not knowing what anything was.
Well, you have a lot of questions and so I think by making this change was the right, is the right change.
I think it's a good suggestion. Anything else? Go call, please.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Moving on, that finishes new business. That takes us to extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at eight forty-six PM.
There's no one online.
See no one online, and for those that are here saying they don't want to get up, we'll close extended public comment at eight forty-six PM. Item thirteen on our agenda, manager's comments. Manager Stu Dryer?
Just want a reminder that Township Hall is, has a soft close on the election day for normal business. It is a water bill due date, so we will be able to accommodate those folks. There's a sign on the door. And as part of that accommodation, we are also pushing back the date that penalties would be added to the bill. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Good. That brings us to final board member comment. Trustee Brown?
I'm all set tonight.
Thank you.
Trustee Thering?
Thank you to the manager and staff for putting together a wonderful budget.
Thank you. And I failed to mention in my comments, you mentioned staff, but I'll mention Finance Director Teal specifically and thank her for her input.
Clerk Cody? Well, I'll just say, get out and vote. Next time we come here, we'll probably have a pretty good idea of what the next board will look like and we'll address that then. Happy to get it. What's that?
Good luck.
Yeah. Thanks to all those that step up and want to serve their community. I wish everybody well. Happy to entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
Okay, we'll go with that. Motion to adjourn by Rice, support by Smith. Any objections? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sign. We are adjourned at eight forty-eight PM. Thank you all.